Hello, welcome to Graphic Policy Radio. This is where comics and social movements meet, and this is a comics podcast with a television problem. This is your host, Elan Eleven, and this is a podcast that knows all too well that the price of getting what you want is getting what you once wanted, because that's right, there's a TV series about The Sandman right now on Netflix, and you can watch it. But should you? I had to throw in a quote from Sandman. I'm delving into that desire and that delirium tonight with two fabulous guests who love the comics, and, well, you know, let's see what we all think about the show. I know not everybody has had a chance to see the series yet, and we wanted to give you guys a bit of a spoiler-free thought about the show before we get into the more in-depth conversation. And joining me throughout are Apollo Gonzalez. Apollo is a digital strategist who advises progressive advocacy campaigns on engaging and mobilizing their communities. He sits on the board of Climate Access, a nonprofit focused on building political and public support for climate and clean energy solutions, and I O B, in our backyards, a nonprofit crowdfunding platform whose mission is funding community-led projects. Apollo also holds public office and serves on city council in the small Texas town of Brookside Village. Welcome to the show, Apollo.
Hey, thanks for having me.
I was so glad to be able to make this happen. I had a feeling with the vast popularity of Sandman that there'd be some folks who I knew from my organizing world who would have a strong attachment to the comic series and might be interested in checking out the show, too.
Yeah, it kind of feels like a common thread across most of the folks that I've met in the space, which is interesting in itself.
Also joining me is Ben Khan. Ben is a GLAD Award nominated writer of comics and novels. You can check out their comics, including the GLAD-nominated graphic novel Renegade Rule, which we talked about on my podcast, and soon-to-be the re-released in bookstores Heavenly Blues, which is also excellent, and we have also talked about on my podcast. Their debut novel, Ellie Campbell Saves Their Saturday, will be out from Scholastic in the fall in 2023. Welcome back to the show, Ben.
Ah, thank you so much for having me for this one. I am very glad to be here and talking about Sandman.
You know, there's just so many, I like, I knew you'd want to, so I reached out to you. I'm like, I know you have Sandman feelings.
Oh, most definitely.
Comics writer, has lots of dramatic black clothing, always wants to talk about non-binary representation. It's kind of spooky. Yeah, I think there's a Sandman assumption I can make about your interests, so.
I think that's a fair assumption you made.
So Apollo, tell me, like, how did you get into the series? And what did it, and by the series, in this case, I'm talking about the comics, and what did it mean to you growing up?
Yeah, so I, you know, I grew up in a very Christian evangelical church where we were really not allowed to read anything but the Bible. So I started to have this sort of moving away from religious texts my sophomore year of high school, and was really sort of starting to explore comics and music, and I think what my parents would call secular popular culture. And in the junior, I guess my junior year in high school, I was at my local comic shop, which I started to frequent, and there was this amazing Dave McKean cover of this new title called The Sandman, and I picked it up and was just instantly enthralled. Over the next several years, it just really felt like it opened a lot of doors to music and literature in a way that I was really ready for at that time. Yeah, so that was the beginning of the journey for me.
I hosted a panel at New York Comic Con a few years back that was about how Sandman got me into it, how comics are a gateway drug to other forms of art and media. And yeah, I know for me, like, Sandman introduced me to a lot of other books and musicians, and I'm not surprised that it had that role for you as well. Is there a particular artist or book that it got you interested in?
Well, I mean, just to, just moving into a whole host of different genres from, you know, from my first reading of H.P. Lovecraft to Ray Bradbury to, you know, digging into mythology, the idea, you know, growing up, the idea of there being other gods, let alone a pantheon of gods, was not really something that was acceptable in the household. So, you know, in Gaiman's writing, he mentioned so many names of gods and other beings that just really, I think, were so new to me. And at the time, we, you know, we didn't have the internet. We were, I was going to the library and digging through tomes of books to find the backstories of a lot of these, a lot of these names. But then, you know, music, I mean, hell, my first listening to Tori Amos was because of this connection to Gaiman, and that opened a whole other world of its own.
That makes a lot of sense. Ben, how did you get into Sandman?
So yeah, so I started really reading comics and getting deep into comics when I started college, and that was about 2009. And really, one of my big introductions, kind of just the way I dove in feet-first was with a lot of the Vertigo classics. So a lot of those early years were spent reading Watchmen, Why the Last Man, Preacher, One Hundred Bullets, and, you know, Little Transmetropolitan, and of course, Sandman, which honestly always felt the most special, as much as I loved all his comics. Like, Sandman was just something else, something above all of the others. And no, hell, I remember the booth I was in, in the Chinese restaurant in Philadelphia I was in, reading Sandman, reading volume five, when I first had the thought, like, wondering if I could be a comic writer, if I can make something like this. And I pretty much spent the past rest of my life since trying to figure that out. So this was really the book that made me want to be a comic writer, was Sandman. So a book I haven't had the chance to revisit in quite some time, but a book that is incredibly special and important to me and placed on an incredibly high pedestal.
I got into this series, it must have been 1995, maybe, and I was at a vintage store in Charlottesville where I was for writing camp, not riding camp, writing. And there was a vintage store, I got, like, a really, really important shirt in my life, and I also got a very important comic, which is a random one-off issue of Sandman, which at that point, the issue, it was somebody had been, clearly was, like, reselling their collection back to the store, because it was from a couple years earlier. And it was, you know, like, how we all used to read comics was random issues, not even runs or compilations of any kind. And I was attracted by the Dave McKean cover, which I just was like, this is the most gorgeous goth thing in the world. And I found it right when I was first getting into the goth scene as a teenager. And it really was such a central part of me developing my aesthetic and interest in that subculture in particular, and really revitalizing my interest in comics. I think it was probably the first comic I read that wasn't like a Marvel superhero comic, really.
Yeah, I think, you know, that was a big part of it for me as well, was this, you know, I'd spent, I'd probably been reading comics for about a year, and a lot of what I was reading at the time were, you know, X-Men episodes and some of the other DC, some of the other DC comics, Batman, and I'm not sure if Frank Miller's works were out at that time or not, but, you know, my connection to comics at that time was very much this sort of superhero, superhero genre. And this just felt so, I just felt like such a departure. And I hesitated to say intellectual, it felt more literary, I guess, in a way that sort of challenged me to think a little bit differently about storytelling. So yeah, it was just such a, I don't know, it just felt so new. This was the beginning of DC's Vertigo imprint, too, wasn't it? I think this was like, when they were doing Books of Magic and a couple of other titles.
It really helped make the, make the line become what it became. I mean, there were some of the, there were titles that predated it that didn't have the same sort of logo and branding, but it very much set, it was like a certain era of comics, and it was, it was sort of like the goth era of comics. And, you know, for all the ups and downs of the series, I mean, I can't deny its importance in my life, especially as someone who spent a good amount of time in that, in that subculture. And, you know, for a lot of us also, it was the first place we saw queer characters in a comic book. There wasn't just subtext jolly so the way it was for basically all the members of the X-Men. And I think that, you know, it's impossible for me, it's impossible for a lot of people to, like, look at the series without that, without that context. So I definitely, you know, for folks who are interested in getting into the comics now, like, well, one, you don't need to read the comics to watch the show. I would have been shocked had a new TV series came into existence and where that was true, and this certainly is the case here. You do not need to read the comics to watch the show. I have not done a full reread of the series. I've reread bits and pieces. I'm not going to tell somebody, oh, my gosh, you need to read this. You know, there are all kinds of reasons that someone might not want to, that are very legitimate, but it's, it's still a really significant piece of art in the history of the medium, and that's just undeniable. And especially if you are interested in horror, when it came to, you know, doing a TV series of it. The media has kept threatening with to release various interpretations of the series over the years. There was going to be a movie. I don't remember at some point, they're like, oh, Terry Gilliam, or they just say Terry Gilliam for literally any creative project. I almost didn't believe it when I heard there really was going to be a TV series. But I'm someone who never really felt like there needed to be an adaptation. It feels like Sandman is an unadaptable comic series to me, and I'd actually felt going into it, like, I kind of hope they don't make this. And then, you know, when you started to see the casting, well, one, a surefire way to get me enthusiastic about an adaptation is to make it more diverse than it originally was, and to have angry white men be angry about that. And even so, I still wasn't sure if I wanted to see an adaptation of the show. But as we got, as we got closer to the time of its launch, the more I was kind of just intrigued at seeing if they could do this, if it was worth it. And, you know, I still believe that, like, there are tons of pieces of comics art out there that should not be adapted, but it's an interesting question. Does an adaptation of Sandman for a TV screen make sense? And I feel that that conversation is one that we're going to have a bit behind the veil of spoilers. So before we get to that, I wanted to pose the question spoiler-free to our listeners of, like, just the spoiler-free take from you guys on, did you enjoy the show? And do you think people who have read the comics might want to check it out? Or we were going to have to guess a little bit about whether non-comics readers would be interested. But what are your thoughts on who should watch it if it's worth checking out, Ben?
Oh, I definitely think it's worth checking out. I would definitely recommend fans of the comic, like, great way to revisit the world and the characters and the story. It's definitely given the awe and the majesty and the wonder that narrative demands. And if you're new, it's going to be a dark, like, Gothic epic, mind-bending fantasy that's going to be totally unlike anything you've seen before, and you're in for, like, a real moody emotional adventure. Or maybe not quite adventure, but experience, even though, and we'll talk about this, this show definitely adds a lot of stuff to try to create a more cohesive and maybe cinematic structure to it than the comic has.
Because the comic is, is so much a comic, like, it's using the comics medium and format in a very sequential episodic way that if the series was really going to try to keep to that, it would have to be like Star Trek series, you know, Star Trek season.
Yeah, like, it's there, the changes it makes are things to give it more of a structure over a season versus thinking purely issue to issue, because this is the era before even the trade paperback collected edition. I mean, this isn't, and I know there's going to be fans out there who feel so tightly and so strongly to the source material that, like, anything outside of a one-to-one is going to be hard to stomach. But, you know, this kind, this is a comic that you kind of can't adapt one-to-one, if only because it's going to be real weird to just have Martian Manhunters show up for five minutes.
I did love that moment from the comic, though. That is something that worked well in the comic and that I think would have been bad in a show. And so I'm glad that this exists in its own world for the TV show, and I'm glad that it existed in the shared universe for the comics page, you know?
Yeah, like, great for the comic, especially before Vertigo, and there's a clear delineation between what is what would have been real confusing for Netflix people that are wondering, like, is that the character from, that showed up at the end for two minutes of Zack Snyder's Justice League, if I even saw that?
I didn't.
Is that the guy? Hold on, is this the guy from Supergirl? Is this connected to the CW Supergirl show?
But I definitely know that there are some people who were disappointed that it was going to be completely standalone, and I just feel like it would have.
I don't know how you expect any different at this point from something like Sandman.
It's very silly. Apollo, do you feel like people should check out the show?
Yeah, I mean, I think that I have a tendency to feel like fans of the series likely in part embrace the series because of its ability to change and adapt and continue to be relevant, not just the text itself, but how the characters and the story are. You know, I mean, Morpheus appears in, you know, multiple ways throughout the series. And there's something about that, appreciation of that, of that evolution of the character, or that changing of the character, that makes me feel like, yeah, it'd be okay to see the story change as well. I just, it just felt really open to it in a way that I've not with other pieces of text, and maybe, maybe other folks feel that way as well. So yeah, I absolutely think that if you loved the series for what it was, that in print, that it's certainly worth giving a shot on the screen itself. And then I think, you know, there's just so much, I have so much trust in Gaiman, his hand in the production of the pieces that we've seen so far in Good Omens. And I know not everyone feels this way about American Gods, but I really loved what they did with American Gods. And so in a lot of ways, I feel like I have a lot of trust in his care for the creation and the reinterpretation of his creations. I think it's totally worth it. I think it's totally worth.
I mean, I would say one of the, I mean, one of the values of it is that it has, you know, Gaiman has revisited some of the things that were fucked up representationally in the comics that, you know, at the time, they were out, were like revelatory to me, just to have that many queer people on the page, even if there are ways in which certain characters played into some negative tropes. But like, writing it now in a 2022 context, like, that's being addressed. There's more queer characters, greater diversity of characters, and it's really, to me, like, kind of one of the reasons that it was kind, that it is sort of worth doing. You know, I would say, having watched, and we've all watched the first four episodes, my feeling towards this show overall is, I like it, I don't love it. I will keep watching the series, though. To me, I think the biggest weakness is the cinematography is just really basic, which is interesting, because I think that there, the art direction work is often very good. But for a comic that is so strongly rooted in unique visuals, sometimes ugly and messy ones, there is plenty of, like, clearly somebody was rushing to print this, issues of the comic, but there is also, like, Colleen Doran issues of the comic. And the visuals are not all I could have dreamed of, ha ha, but there's enough, there's enough cool visual things in there for me to have it still be worth my time. And certainly, the performances are very good. The casting is very good.
Yeah, definitely, some great performances. I mean, just in terms of visual, I think, like, so much of it was just me, I've always wondered, how are they going to just do, like, Morpheus himself? And I definitely give a lot of credit for Tom Sturridge, definitely really enjoy his performance, especially the voice. Like, that voice is great, like, booming yet whispering, like, very, just like, chilling and cold, like, when you read that special font, it fits the voice. Like, that voice is the special font. But what's off to me about the visuals, and it's not the hair, I can accept, like, it's not the full Robert Smith hair.
But the hair, the hair is a good interpretation. Like, if you want to, if you want to have that hair in 2022, and if people think it looks cool and unique, but not like, what the fuck, that is the way to do the hair.
It's the spirit of the hair without looking like ridiculous Yu-Gi-Oh cosplay hair?
Yes. I mean, and look, I knew dudes, there are guys who had that hair in the 80s, like, for real, in the scene, but it would have felt a little bit over, I don't know. I think they did a cool, I think they did a good job with the hair. I mean, I do think at a certain point also, the visual, the visuals are kind of leaning on how good he looks in that role in ways that kind of let the, again, not great cinematography and lighting have it easy, because it's just like, yep, his face is selling this, and his hair is selling this, and the way he's standing in the, you know, the field is selling.
His face, great Morpheus face. There's going to be a weird take, but part of what I don't like, what, and this is really comparing it to the design of the character in the comic, that I think doesn't work, is very similar to a problem I had with the Moon Knight costume in Moon Knight, which is, in both cases, both like, the Moon Knight costume, especially the Mr. Knight suit variation, and Morpheus in the comic, it's not just that they are pale or white color, it is that they are negative space. They are this unimpeachable, like, they, like, the world exists around them, like, they are negative, like, they are emblematic of negative space, and how that is used artistically is such a big part of just them existing in the comics. And I don't feel that live action, they figured out how to recreate that sense of, like, white as otherworldly, like, existing as a shape of a whole in the world rather than existing within reality. Like, that's an effect that I don't think has been effectively translated from page to screen yet.
Yes. I definitely am there with you. And so with that, dear listeners, we are about to go into full spoilers ahead mode. We've only seen the first four episodes. I don't binge-watch stuff. I find it to be an unappetizing way to enjoy my food, as it were, but we definitely made it through the first four episodes. And so go and check those out, and then if you're interested in getting our thoughts, come right back and listen to the conversation. Okay, we're back. You know what? Having just gone through a little bit of negative stuff in my conversation with, with Ben right now, Apollo, like, is there something, like, what was the thing that stood out to you most from watching this that you feel like was really successful in this show?
Well, I mean, I think I have to agree on the, on the casting portion. I really feel like, I don't know how it could have been cast any better. I, I mean, it is.
Such a great cast.
It really is. I mean, and all the way through, I think the only, the only thing that was a little bit distracting for me was Matthew's voice, because I can just see Patton Oswalt saying those things.
Yeah, it's like, I'm with you there. Like, he's, I love Patton Oswalt. One of my absolute favorite stand-up comedians, he's too ubiquitous. He's voiced too many characters in comic book things.
Yeah, that's a good observation.
Yeah, I think that's right. But, but I think all of the others are fantastic. I think they really, I think they captured, at least in the, in the, so in the first episode for me, the feeling that I got in the comics about the house, about Burgess's house, really came through, that, that sort of, I don't know, that sort of occult, you know, old home feeling.
Gothic car, Gothic car or home.
Yeah, it was really.
Charles Dance. Love Charles.
Charles Dance is amazing. Perfect casting, just the right kind of absolutely evil piece of shit, upper-crust, violent, right under the surface. And a really cool take on his, on his son, in what I think could have been a very thankless role in a lot of ways, too.
And god, just that image, like, dream, like, Tom Sturridge in the sphericals, in the glass sphere, entrapped in the circle. Oh, what a, just like, a haunting image so well-translated from the comic.
I mean, I've, they got me so tense, and I was so sad when the heat, when Alex shoots the burr. I mean, I know he's, you know, but like, ugh, my heart.
The most, for me, the image that stands out the most. So when I think back on my first experience with that first issue, in my head is very clearly the scene that they translated into the show, which is the title page, the full page, title page of Sleep of the Jusp, the first episode, which is that sort of top-down view of Morpheus inside the ring itself, when he's just been captured, and his cape is sort of spread out around him, he's holding the ruby, and the ruby's on the ground, he's holding the sand, he's got his helm on. That image was almost one-for-one translated over into the show. And, and I was just, like, I almost shed a tear, because for me, that is, that symbolizes the, the whole beginning of this arc, and that they so faithfully translated that onto the screen. It just felt, I don't know, it felt like they were talking to me in that moment, right? Like, we're going to give you something that you can appreciate and that you can love, because you know what this image means. You know, you saw this image in 1989 when it came out. And yeah, I really, I loved it. I appreciated that. I'm actually looking at the image now in the book right now in front of me, and it's just such a fantastic image.
There were definite moments where, even when the line wasn't said and was only from an ad, just seeing that ad, like, or I could just hear it and feel it in my head, just that advertisement for it, "I will show you horrors in a handful of dust." That just, to this day, gives me chills.
I, you know, I thought the design for the glass sphere, for example, was really beautiful, the whole way that room was done up. And, and I think that the show has done a good job with the horror aspect. I feel like sometimes I forget that Sandman is a horror comic, because so many of the things that I liked the most about it when I was a younger person weren't the horror aspects of the story at all. But it is at its heart a horror comic. It's not at its heart a Shakespeare comic, do you know what I mean? Well, I mean, it is also that, but I, I think the show really does a good job with the horror. I.
I mean, David Thewlis when he's in the.
Oh, my god.
David Thewlis when he's in the car with the psychologist from Ted Lasso, like, even without supernaturalness, was just, like, scary.
He is a tremendous actor. He is a tremendous actor. He was so fucking good in Wonder Woman. He's just, he's just great.
Oh, yeah, like, I, I really appreciate him. I, again, four episodes in, and maybe this is just knowing that What's Coming is one of the most horrific comics I've ever read still to this day. Like, one of the most disturbing comics ever put to page, and knowing that, like, it's coming. But he is just so good. Like, he is, even in these four episodes, he is terrifying as John Dee, though. Fuck it, I knew this was coming. I was still seeing, like, the articles. It was like, the surprising connection between Sandman and Wonder Woman 1984, because they both have the goddamn Dreamstone. Get fucked superhero movie clickbait articles.
Oh, my god, the freaking, I don't even know. It's just not how to talk about the show, you know what I mean? But that's, that's the only way they know how to talk about television anymore, right? Speaking of horror, Boyd Helbrook as the Corinthian, fabulous performance. And I think they did a nice subtle job with the eye teeth.
Yes, they didn't, like, go too, like, I feel like it could have ended up being, like, if they were, like, chitter-chattery teeth, like, it could have spilled over into, like, a little silly. It's definitely interesting their change to make the Corinthian a little more of a uniting through-line antagonist for this first season, it seems like, where, you know, in the comic, he was just a nightmare that took advantage of the opportunity Dreams' absence provided, and needed to just be hunted down, because he's a fucked-up nightmare serial killer. And in the show, they're using, they're really using him as a real through-line to connect the Burgess and John Dee, and it's all more of a deliberate plan that he's hatching. And it really, you know, it seems like it's, again, what we were talking about, giving that episodic structure of the comics a more seasonal structure.
Yeah, I mean, it's the biggest change, the big, or at least the most notable change from the books, is that, you know, we don't, I think in the books, we don't see the Corinthian until
Much, much later.
10, 10 or 11, I think, issue 10 or 11. So I appreciate the way that they're using the Corinthian to help sort of move things along and drive that narrative and be that, that through line, like you said. It is funny, my, I gave these, I gave these comics to my sister, who's 15 years younger than me. When she turned 15, and she texted me last night, she texted me last night and said, "The Corinthian is just as horrifying now as he was when you gave me the books the first time," which is just really great. It's really great that it didn't, that he endures in that way.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like that was the first thing, that and the serial killer convention were like the two scary things that just really lived in my mind the most. Do we know, are they trying to do the full series in one season?
No, it's the first two, the first season covers the first two volumes.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense. It was really interesting to me also to see how they're sort of slowly unrolling the universe, when world-building aspects of it. Like, I think we find out about the specific, the concept of him being endless, and then the names of, not even all, but just some of the other Endless, like, near the end of episode three, Through the Mouth of Joanna Constantine.
Yes, which I, well, how do we feel about Joanna Constantine? Because I really like Jenna Coleman. I thought she was delightful.
I, I loved the grittiness of John in the comics. There was something about his struggle and his reluctance to be who he is, and. and the job that he has to do. I think that really lent, lent itself to this. And, and what we're getting is we're getting Joanna, which is his ancestor as a replacement for him.
Yeah.
And she's very, she's very clean, clean cut, very together, very excited about the job that she does, she does and and the role that she has to play, which is exactly how she was in, in the books as well. So I sort of, I, I feel like I'm missing that grittiness. I would have loved to have seen a gritty Joanna Constantine.
What surprised me about her was, because I went into being like, oh, okay. You can't quite use John Constantine. You're trying to have it be more standalone, not have like big recognizable DC characters, especially ones who have supposedly their own J.J. Abrams shows upcoming. But I was still so, it's like, okay, this is our character that's fulfilling the same role, gonna be very similar. But I was then surprised by how much it was still very much comics accurate John Constantine backstory to the point where it is still the astrid drag to hell flashback, like origin. And like has the same love interests as comics John Constantine. Like we got the Kit Ryan name drop, which is
Yeah.
a real deep cut for all but like, unless you're a big deep hell blazer fan.
I mean, I only realized they were doing the John Constantine comics relationships when they mentioned somebody called Oliver, because that's like from the recent series for Constantine. Yeah, it's, it's complicated because I was excited to happen to Joanna instead of John, because like, let's have there be more female characters in this. Obviously really glad and important that she's still bisexual, that the character of Constantine in this series is still bisexual. Not surprised to see that in the name of representation, they're not going to have her be equally scummy and self loathing. And, but it's not like she's this idolized person. Like she absolutely did run out on her girlfriend and leave her with an incredibly dangerous time bomb practically under her head. And then, then her girlfriend dies tragically and it's totally her fault.
Yeah, like a character that I, not, not as scummy as the John Constantine we know, but I definitely got that there was that very familiar self loathing, just that this version of the character might be a little better at hiding it. But I was definitely seeing a lot of that Constantine self loathing.
One of the things that people are really interested in hearing us talk about are the ways that the show has changed the way representation and diversity of different. I mean, I think particularly with queer characters between the show and the comic series itself. And, you know, one of the things I've said is that we won't really fully be able to answer that question till the end of the series because there's so many people we haven't met yet. I, I mean, the fact that they're cast a non-binary actor as Desire and Desire was the first, you know, non-Teresius from The Odyssey, like non-binary character that I think most of us encountered in fiction as younger people.
Without a doubt.
I mean, unless you, unless you want to talk about like mystique in that light or something like that, like, so just even understand the importance of that, you know, to have more, there's more LGBTQ, LGBTQ characters in this now even it seems than the original. And, you know, one of my listeners was asking like, well, what about the really high body count of queer characters in the comic books? And it's like, there's a high body count of literally everybody in the comic books. I, I didn't leave, I didn't leave it at the time, feeling like we were particularly targeted, which is not to say that there aren't fucked up things like having the trans woman character die because of gender essentialism. It's the sort of thing where it's clear, like he's tried to make the opposite statement, but it comes out all wrong. And I know that deliberately in doing the series, he's revisiting that stuff to have it not be fucked up anymore. But like within the context, like the, the comics had a greater diversity of kinds of queer people in them than like anything else we really, you're going to see like certainly in comics and in, and in many other, you know, accessible medium to people.
You weren't finding many more comics more queer than this unless you're reading The Invisibles.
Well, this is predates that, you know, so most of it predates it.
Yes.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, I mean, it is still as being done by like a straight guy, right? But you know, I, I think that the show is being thoughtful about that. And using it as an opportunity to correct some things that weren't done quite right before. And it just always felt to me that the original series intent was to do right, even when it doesn't always do right. So here we have it.
And there's like some, again, like Vivian Achimapong as Lucien, who's, again, she's everything I ever imagined the characters being.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like that is, that is Lucien.
Yeah. She's really wonderful.
That is the voice, that is the demeanor, that is the, that is like the air of dignified loyalty that is the character.
And I recognized it immediately. Like I didn't spend time poring over the casting in advance, but the second she's on screen, you're like, oh, that's Lucien.
Yeah, as soon as you see like the, the glasses that hoies, the way she like stands and carries herself, like the body language is Lucien.
She's also, she's like, she's very tired and trying to maintain that she's not, which I think like is an important part of that performance, you know?
Yeah.
And it's the balance. I think that the, the balance to the emotion, right? I mean, that this, I think this is one of the challenges that I'm, that I'm struggling with, with with Tom Sturridge's performances. My, my memory of an internalization of Morpheus is one of sort of emotionless stoicism without, with the exception of these few moments of high passion where, where he gets extremely angry or his jealous, jealousy comes to the surface in some ways. I, I often felt like he was above the emotion, detached from the emotion in his, you know, eternalness. And that Lucien always brought that emotion to it. And, and Tom is emoting a little bit more. And I think it's necessary because I don't know that it translates the it feels pretty boring, right? So he's, he has to, he has to emote, I think, in order to make it interesting on the screen. But I, but it hasn't reduced the balance that Lucien brings to the character. You know, in that, the, the last scene where he, the last scene, I think in the first episode where he returns home, or maybe it's the second episode where he returns home. And she runs to him and cradles him, like I literally shed a tear. It was the emotion that I was waiting for, waiting to that little bit of a release that I needed. And I think, I think she handled it absolutely beautifully. I, I'm really looking forward to seeing that performance throughout the rest of the series as well.
You know, I'm so excited with Gwendolyn Christie because I have not gotten to see her perform in anything other than Game of Thrones. And so it's so edifying to see her get to do something completely different. Because I, you know, you worry when you have an actor with a very unique look, who gives a very, a very iconic kind of performance and you really worry about them getting typecast. And she's got to do something completely different in this and she carries it off so well. And there's just, it's a completely different performance than what you've seen before.
With her and Lucifer and her take on Lucifer, none of that like tripped me up or had me even like thinking or remembering about like Lucifer, the TV show.
Oh, that should, I don't, that doesn't count.
No, it's so different. But what tripped me up a little bit was when they said like, mazakeen. And my brain was expecting the mazakeen from Lucifer, the show. And then it was, and I'm like, that was, it was mazakeen that made my brain have to go like, hold on, wait, nope, stop. Okay. Recalibrate. Yep. Nope. I'm on the same, I'm on the right path. Now, okay, keep going.
Yeah, I was.
That's not a, that's not.
She was like, she was a little bit less.
My brain.
She is, mazakeen is less gory on this than she is in the comics. And in the comics, she has this, she talks like her body is half decayed. And having read it, that those scenes just recently, it felt like it was the kind of thing that if you took it from the page, even on the page, it felt like it could have sounded a bit ableist, frankly. And so I was glad to hear the character not speaking in a, in as mannered a way.
I love the moment when like just instantaneous Lucifer switches from the all white outfit to the all black outfit.
The costumes are really good. The costumes are really good.
Yeah.
I just, I just don't know why the cinematography is so bland. And you know, a friend of mine was, who's, you know, another, a big film buff was saying, she's like, I think they're just trying to be cheap. And it's like, how, it just is so wrong for that to be what you're going to play cheap on. And yet still kind of feels very believable for television.
I know.
Because it, when you're looking at the visuals and when the visuals really work, it's these actors doing, it's excellent casting with actors doing amazing work with their faces and bodies and really strong costumes. And some really good prop design at times. Like for example, the helm, the helm is perfect.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
I thought hell had a lot of interesting designs, like the people having to carry their own fire, the people like embedded into the rock and like the gates and the trees. Like I thought, I thought hell was the most interestingly designed of the locations we got to see.
Yeah.
And the most interesting presented. Uh, what did you think of the transformation battle? Cause I know that that's probably my favorite moment of the whole comic series and one that's stuck with me so much since I read it. So I was really curious to hear what people thought about that scene in particular.
I was disappointed in it. I, I felt like, um, this is, I think this is the one piece where I felt the battle was in my own imagination and my own interpretation of the print of the books in print, more expansive than what we saw. And maybe it's just, maybe it's just the visuals that they chose. It just didn't feel the gravity wasn't, the, the gravity of the situation didn't feel like it was translated well to the, to the performance of the, of the game for some reason to me.
No. Again, it has been a while since I read the comic and I don't remember this being in the comic, but I might be wrong, but I don't remember Matthew giving Morpheus a pep talk like he's in a boxing movie.
Yeah, I don't think he did.
Yeah. And, and with that, and with Patton Oswalt's voice, that very much was like, it had that tone to it. Absolutely.
Yeah, like that's the thing. There's implying like, oh, it's Matthew. He was like a bad dude and then he died and turned into a raven. I'm like, I can't believe this man was anything other than standup comedian Patton Oswalt before he got turned into this raven.
Exactly.
Oh my God. Yeah, I, I felt like that battle has always been something with a really high concept to it that I'm not sure that I could give a specific feedback on how to make it work better and make it work better, I guess is what is the thing. But I guess also not my job. They didn't hire me. You know, but I, they could have done more at the end with hope because I feel like we missed from the comics was like that last beat of explanation of why that I think is actually kind of necessary to still make it clear that like, because the only reason hell is hell is because people have hope
Yeah.
for not being there.
Yeah, I, I did like that moment at the end, like what Howard does hell have without the dream of heaven?
Mm hmm. And you need that, you know? So it's kind of a questionable piece there. I, um, I loved his interaction with Nada and I want to give a shout out for a small role, Ernest Kingsley Jr., who plays the version of Sandman that Nada sees when they walk by, because this is important for folks who might not know, like in the comics, Dream looks like whatever kind of person it is you are, except for a particularly haunting version of it. Often with white skin and black hair, but not even necessarily like when the god of cats sees him, he looks like a, a white cat, for example. So, uh, so Nada is an African woman during a time where it's prehistoric. So she's never met anybody who was an African. So he's also African. So they, so they cast another actor to do that. And talk about a challenging bit. You have like a few moments to pretend to be an actor pretending to be a different character. And this guy nailed it. Like the facial expressions were dead on. I was impressed.
A challenge. You not only have a few moments to be this other character, you have to be this other character when he's expressing his most unlikable traits. Like you have to express this character at his worst. And I, I love that moment. Cause again, that's so important to the series. I was waiting for like, when are they going to start getting into A, how he appears different to, depending on who sees him? And B, like, are you like, one of the, his defining character traits? How, what a terrible, terrible boyfriend and ex-boyfriend Morpheus is.
And like, and on top of it, like the fact that nobody is, nobody explains, oh, this is just how she sees him. Like he has to make it to the audience. The audience has to be able to tell you like, oh, this is the same person.
Yes, there, there can't be handholding. Like you have to just, again, like for, there needs to be something, and this is something that I think four episodes in, I think they've maybe erred a little bit on the side of not doing this, but overall I think they've mostly achieved a pretty good balance. There needs to be something a little dreamlike about this series.
You know, you're right. They don't have a ton of that moment being unexplained and yet being very, very clear because of how it's done. You're right. There isn't a ton of other dreamlike stuff that we've seen quite yet.
Yeah. When he moves through the dreams to gather the materials for the three.
I love that. That's one of my favorite sequences.
Fantastic. That was so well done. Yeah, absolutely. And, and I want to see more of that. I want to see more of that, of him moving through, moving through those dreams. Of course, we'll see that as we, as we move on through the series. There is that, there is that moment, I think that was beautifully translated as well, that I felt was very true to the text, where he's sitting at the end of the pier and waiting to sort of go into the dreaming. There's a panel in the book that, that has him sitting there about to do that. And that, that felt, I think without, probably could have felt a little better without Patton Oswalt encouraging him or trying to dis, oh no, it wasn't that. It was a Lucien that was trying to convince him not to go. Um, I think in the, in the book, he's on his own and sort of trying to make that up. So I guess the narration was important to encourage that.
I think one of the problems with it being Patton Oswalt specifically is that him as a main character's flying animal sidekick is just straight up fucking his role from Happy.
Oh, oh God.
Thanks. Thanks for that.
Thanks, Ben. That was, anyway.
I, I have to say that I absolutely adore Cain and Abel and how, how those have been, how those have been translated.
I, oh my God, like I didn't even remember like a Gregory sacrifice in the book. Like I remembered Goldie, but I didn't remember like feeling much about like Gregory. This show, there's like, he absorbs Gregory and I just ran over and I scooped up my cat and I just like give him the biggest hug.
I mean, I always, I have, I struggle, my reaction to moments like that are always that I feel like it's cheap because it's cheap to make me feel that way because it's so fucking easy. But it's also, I mean, it's, I don't know how you avoid doing that.
I consume stories to feel things because otherwise I'm just dead inside. So I'm here for the emotions, cheap or not.
I guess. I don't know. I just have a hard time with animal self sacrifice. It's like, but I, you know, it is, it is what it is. Um, and yeah, Goldie is adorable. You know, I, I, I thought those actors did a really great job. And it's interesting that there are the space that doesn't crumble, right? Because that story is like so old and resilient.
Yeah.
And apparently created by G slash D and therefore has a durability that some of the other myths and the dreamland don't, which is why they're still there, I think.
What are you, what are your thoughts on the, this visualization of the dreamland? I felt a little, there is this, the, the preview in the beginning, when, when we are introduced to the dreaming. It feels so incredibly polished. It almost feels like a Lord of the Rings elf.
Yep.
Elven.
Yeah, I think it leans a little too into the classic like fantasy book, like storybook feel. Whereas I feel the dreaming in the house is always something a little indescribable. Like there's just something I feel like a little once upon a time about the dreaming in the show.
Yeah. Yeah, it feels, it feels really polished. And I always imagined the dreaming a little darker than that, except for some corners where things were bright, like Fiddler's Green or something, right? And it felt like this was all bright and I don't know, almost Asgardian, right?
Yeah, it didn't feel very imaginative. The door, like the gates, I thought were really beautiful. They took the time to be very specific with them. You know, they have little carvings of Sandman in those gates, but then the overall, the overall design was just not very imaginative.
Well, soon presumably we'll get Marv Pumpkinhead and then I want to know where he was on January 6th. I, I will say that's more of the Sandman Expanded Universe where they got into some of the dodgier aspects with Marv Pumpkinhead.
I was not aware of this.
There's some like anti-immigration theme, like stuff that they have Marv Pumpkinhead do in some of like the dreaming comics, like that they've done in the last few years.
Huh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, not so much in the classic stuff where he's just grumpy. And like, what if he was real, real grumpy?
I don't like when shows or anything really decides that they're going to locate racism and bigotry in the character who is most coded as like working class. It's not to say that there aren't working class people with those opinions, but it's to say that the, generally speaking, wealthy people who are creating this popular culture would prefer to locate all the bigotry in the lower classes. So they don't have wealthy people who are creating this popular culture would prefer to locate all the bigotry in the lower classes. So they don't have to feel like it's reflective of them. And it's fucking cheap and it's wrong. So there's a listener question that kind of connects back to one of my main points. This is from a noted scholar of industrial music and therefore absolutely a person with expertise adjacent to the series, S. Alexander Reed, um, asks, "Is it possible for an adaptation to be too authorized and too faithful? Relatedly, is a horror comic by a no-name punk in the 1980s really the same thing as a prestige series in 2022 presented by the most, and this is all cap, the most caps, the most important fantasy tale ever by unimpeachable god storyteller?" And you know, I mean, my, my, my thing here is that if people expect the Sandman TV series to be impactful in the way that the comics were, that's not possible because the comics changed what people thought the genre could do. And it is just not, in, in 2022 prestige television land, like a Netflix show is not going to redefine television, what television means for a huge percentage of the audience. And so it, there's just two different, completely different things, you know?
I like, I personally, I can't go into it expecting the same impact. Like I said, like the Sandman, the comic completely changed the course of my life. It inspired me in a way nothing quite has before or since. I can't have the same reaction to the show. If only because like when I read the comic, I was nineteen and the world was ahead of me and I was full of dreams and energy. And now I'm thirty-two and tired and have deadlines, but no, I mean, yeah, like what is it saying about the medium it's in? It's why I think, you know, to use another recent example, uh, I think it's why The Boys as a superhero comic in the two thousands had, had really nothing to say. And why The Boys as a superhero, you know, prestige TV show in the 2020s has a lot to say. I mean, again, like, I don't think, it can never be one to one, like we were saying, like it's different time, different medium. It's, I don't know. Yeah. I feel like you could do a whole indie movie just about like time and experiencing the same story in different ways at different points in your life.
Yeah.
Yeah, there could never be another one of those.
Yeah. And not, and not just at points in your life, but I think at the pace as well, right? I mean, we're, we're talking about, I don't know how many years Sandman it took gaming to get through the seventy-five issues or seventy-two issues or whatever it was. It was years.
So jealous of when runs could be that long.
I know.
You know, I mean, I started reading, I started reading the series when I was sixteen, right? And, and um, at, at sixteen, going from being a junior in high school to finishing it off when I was, you know, in my early twenties or I guess, yeah, I guess early twenties. It just felt like, or maybe it was late teens, just before early twenties. I can't remember how many years it ran. What a world of change happens in one life in that moment. And how, how many different ways does the first um, issue or the tenth issue or the twentieth issue? How many different ways can you relate to those things at different points in your life? And especially at that point in your life where every year or something radically different, right? You're in, in love and out of love and in jobs and out of jobs and in a way that um, feels like a really rapid pace. And this is a sort of stabilizing world that you can return to over multiple years. And you just can't really do that with the, with the Netflix series. And I can't imagine expecting it to, to do that or to carry that sort of weight.
Is there anything that you think the series had has adapted too fa- too faithfully though?
Not yet. I don't, I haven't come across anything that feels too faithful.
Only in that for his own health, I'm worried what Tom Sturridge might be doing to maintain those cheekbones.
Oh my God. Yeah, there was a level of articulated muscle when you have his back where I was like, please tell me you're eating because well, he's definitely a hundred percent fucking dehydrated when they shot that. So I definitely consider the standards that superhero media are telling actors and actresses that their bodies have to maintain are a workplace hazard.
And I mean, again, we're
Union did something about it frankly.
We're first wait, like we're so, so only like less than halfway through the season. Like when I think about some adaptations that have been like too faithful, I think the big issue that are like the common issue that usually comes to mind is oh, they haven't made the changes they've needed to make the pacing or the plot development work with this new medium. And we've kind of just, and I feel like we've discussed like, oh, but will they have? So I feel like it might be, again, like it might have been too loyal, too faithful if it was ta- if it was episodic to the point of needing to be like Star Trek, the original series, like you were saying, Alana. So
Yeah.
I think that most common adapted too faithfully pitfall has been avoided. Like it seems like they are conscientious about like, how do we make this story a story that is told over a season of television? And not just a straight adaptation of a series of loosely, of like monthly released comic book issues.
Yeah. And I, I like that they've, they haven't moved sequentially a ton of stuff around, but I like that they've moved sequentially things around a little bit because it points to me. To me, it points that they are thinking about it strategically rather than just being loyalists to it.
Totally.
I, I have a bit of a fun question for us. Um, is this show adequately Goth? As we would hold those definitions to be in our current year and time.
I definitely think that Tom Sturridge and all the vibe he brings, like again, I'm imagining him in the, the scenes in the ruined library. That's pretty fucking Goth. I know. What's standing out to me is not Goth is Boyd Holbrook in The Corinthian, but you don't get Boyd Holbrook to be Goth. That's just not a Goth character, The Corinthian, as creepy as he is.
He had a very eighties yuppie veneer.
Yeah.
With the comics. Like that's what he was designed to be. It'd be like, that's sleek and clean.
Boyd Holbrook, like, God, Boyd Holbrook feels almost so obvious to me that I almost wonder if he even had to audition or if they just like, as soon as someone said his name for The Corinthian, they were just like, oh, fuck yeah, let's just do that.
I actually know nothing about him.
Well, he probably the most recognizable stuff that you might recognize him in is uh, he was in Narcos and he was Donald Pierce in Logan.
Of Donald Pierce, but like, so like, but like, what's his shtick? What made that be an obvious casting?
Oh, just that very like vaguely Tex- Texan, white elitist, yet like charming, yet clearly unhinged energy.
Yep. There you go. Apollo, do you feel that this series is adequately Goth?
Not yet. I mean, I think it's there. I think it's, it's the, the promise is there. I think we're after episode four, we're heading into territory where we can really, right? Maybe after this, maybe after this first storyline. See if we can get some more of that with Dr. John Lee, but uh, I think once we, once we finish John Lee's, John Dee's story, I think we open up a world that where uh, can be more adequately Goth.
Okay. I want to
It's a good point.
I want to amend my answer because I think I've been mostly satisfied, especially with the stuff revolving around Morpheus, Ivan and uh, Joanna Constantine. I've been kind of satisfied with the visual Gothiness. Where I think the show could be a lot Gothier is the music.
Okay. I was about to go there. A cou- a couple of things. I mean, one, I think the show isn't adequately Gothic in the sense that it, the lighting is just too flat and boring and the cinematography is like I've said, like, is not creative enough, which is just a bizarre thing for a show like this. But um, but yeah, the music and soundtrack. I associate Sandman with the artist that introduced me to. I mean, I I'm like the world's biggest fucking Iggy Pop fan and I first was aware of his stuff because Sister Midnight is what's playing in a very pivotal scene that I don't want to spoiler to people, but like, you know, in a strip club that happens later. And I was just so haunted by the lyrics from the Iggy Pop song before I even actually got to hear it played from how it's used in the comics. And it's, it introduced so much music to me and that there, the show has the budget for it. I mean, I, I hope that they get to use that song in the right scene later in fact, but um, even if they're not going to, even if you're not, I'm not asking for it to be like a jukebox musical, that would be inappropriate as well, but you, they do have, the, the show does have a score. The score is not particularly doing anything for me and they should be spending some.
Nothing that's standing out is memorable. Definitely no songs that I felt were heightening the atmosphere. Like it's all, again, like I'm trying to, it was functional, not memorable. The score so far.
Yeah. I mean, it feels, I wonder if this, if the person who did the score for this isn't the same person who did the score for American Gods, because it's giving a very American Gods vibe.
Oh, interesting. Yeah. Yeah. No, the score is doing nothing for me. Oh, I gotta talk to my brother and see what he, he like does scores. I'm like gonna see what he thinks about it, but it doesn't really do anything for me. And like, I just, I, I want them to use music in a smarter way. There's um, I mean, there's a lot, there's like, there's always Goth, new Goth artists making new Goth music right now. So if, if people are like, well, we don't want this to be locked to a particular point in time or be retro. Well, one, Call of Sister Midnight was retro when he used it in this comic. But two, um, there's always new Goth music coming out and there's new Goth kinds of sounds and artists and you, they could be enriching the story with those if they wanted to keep it.
I mean, like Yellowjackets invented a new fictional nineties Riot Girl punk band, just for like a cool, original, yet authentic sounding opening song. Like there is money to make new, cool atmospheric, yet even still orchestral Goth rock for this. I could use scenes that are just vibes, like just give me Morpheus going through wondrous, mind-bending visuals while super atmospheric, like Goth rock sounds are playing. Like just give me more vibes.
Yes, I would like more Goth vibes. Uh, there, there's still time. There's still time. Is there anything that um, you guys are really, really hoping that you get to see adapted in some way in this, even if it's not this season?
I think, look, I mean, I know it's coming and like, this is very obvious for my super non-binary ass. I cannot wait to see Mason Alexander Park as Desire. I'm so excited for canonical, non-binary Desire. Played by a non-binary actor. Um, I am just like, again, as someone who went back, like when they started figuring out, um, I was like non-binary. I went through my old Sandman comics, like reread scenes of Desire, like there has always been something very, I was gonna say like attractive about the character, but that's the point there, Desire. But to see that gender queer aspect of the character so in its entirety and like textually embraced, I'm really excited for.
I don't know that there's any particular piece that I'm looking forward to. I think I'm just, I'm, I'm really uh, sort of opening myself up to just sitting back and embracing every piece of it as it comes and, and that how each piece is interpreted. Verdicting the story changed just a little bit in a couple of different places. And so I don't know. That's, that's enjoyable in itself for me.
You know, I really don't want to come into anything with like a, a checklist of what I want to see because you know, sort of like the quote from Sandman I kicked us off with, "The price of getting what you want is getting what you once wanted." But like, part of me is like, I do really want to see the strip club scenes from, I don't remember, I guess, I think it would probably be next season that that would come up, but um, you know, to me, it was, it was one of the first places where I saw people talking with sex workers who were talking about their jobs as a job. And not as this like crazy tragic fate that befell them. And that was really revolutionary, having that in the comics too. And the art for that. It's Jill Thompson, I'm pretty sure. One of the, the greatest from Sandman for sure. And it would be nice to have that, that story continue as well. So uh, is there anything that you both, either of you wants us to hit up that we haven't hit up yet?
You know, you know, we really didn't talk about the character of um, Ethel Crips. How did we find that character? Cause like, I like, you know, being this kind of magical art dealer who outsmarts The Corinthian, but also has this very complicated relationship with John Dee. Like, and I know she was there in the comics and, and again, it's been a while and it feels like I don't remember her having such a big role. And it seems like she also exists to help further the new, you know, season-long plotline connective tissue.
That is all true.
So yeah, how, what did we think of her character and stuff? And uh, Jolie Richardson's performance? Cause I definitely liked her performance.
Yeah, I thought it was a good performance. And I think you described what, how they're using her in the show very well. I um, I didn't remember her at all, like when they mentioned that as the character coming in. And I think it looks like it's a useful device and it's a good performance. Sure.
Yeah, I think so, because I think she played a relatively small part. I, I just listened, I just did the audible book. Cause like, you know, I don't know if you'll listen to it or not, the
No, I heard good things.
Yeah, they did the first couple of volumes and, and this, you know, this whole piece with John Dee is fairly fresh in my mind. And I feel like yeah, she did not have a, a huge piece um, in the story. So I think they've, they've certainly extended that to help move things along. I, I think her performance was great. I think that the, those final, those moments with, with um, with John Dee were great. When she goes to visit him, it felt, it felt uh, it felt authentic to me in a way that I wasn't expecting.
Yeah. Also great design work on the amulet of protection.
Oh, love that amulet.
Sell copies of, I, I, it's so hard for me now, like I have this lens on where I'm like, oh, that's what they're going to sell in the collectibles. So that will, I'm like, yeah, that's going to be a collectible and they're
Cool looking demon eye ring necklace. Ooh, into that amulet. For sure.
Yeah. Apollo, anything we haven't hit up yet you'd like us to cover?
There's only one discord piece for me at the outset, um, that maybe, maybe y'all can help me and, and think through this. Roger Burgess in, in, at the outset of this, in, in the original story didn't have a son who died, who he wanted to bring back. It's very clear that he, he's seeking, I think it says very clearly in there at some point, that he's seeking um, fame and recognition. He's in competition with Aleister Crowley for recognition in his being a magician. And in this, they, they inserted that that in the plot point, that wanting to bring his son back plot point. Just didn't, it, it felt, um, I don't know, it felt unnecessary, but maybe I'm not thinking about it in the right way. Maybe it was, maybe it was necessary to create some connection with the audience.
No, I think you're right. It's not necessary. It, it is. I think it put, you know, it contributes to the idea of this being a specific time and place and also him being like the world's worst dad for how he's treating his other son, right? But I don't know. Yeah. And maybe if they were doing it to make him be more relatable, I don't see how that's particularly helpful. I don't know.
Yeah. I, I, I think that's the only thing that has sort of stood out to me is, is like I said, uh, as a discord. I, I think the performance was incredible. I think we started off talking about Charles Dance's performance and I think it was absolutely fantastic.
Oh, he's just so good at being so terrifying and vile.
Oh yeah. Still got that Tywin energy.
Yep, yep, yep. I'm glad, actually I should also say, I'm really glad the show didn't just fucking cast everybody from Game of Thrones because when they cast a couple, I think those might be the only actors who were in both, um, Vanon and Christie and Charles Dance. I might be misremembering, but I think there was some internet buzz around like, oh, that if they have all the casts, I'm like, no.
Well, I really feel like there was that period in Hollywood where A, like almost anything had at least a few Game of Thrones actors, but specifically like really bad, like not very like particularly well-produced, like genre shows or movies would just get like as many Game of Thrones actors as they could to try to like seem legitimate. Or be like, no, we got the Jorah guy. Like, look, we're totally legit.
That's so true. Yeah. I'm glad that the show didn't feel the need to do that because
Yeah, there were stuff like, oh God, like, I don't know, like Witch Hunter's Apprentice or something where it's like Kit Harrington shows up for like 10 minutes between, where he had time to film between seasons. And they put that shit in all the posters and trailers. Like, I don't know. It was just a, I'm glad Hollywood has just moved beyond Game of Thrones actors for cultural legitimacy.
Apollo, where can our listeners keep up with you?
Actually, I'll just plug the two organizations that I sit on the board on because they do um, really incredible work. Climateaccess.org and um, I O B dot org, I O B Y dot org. Both organizations are doing really good stuff out there in the world. And if you ever want to see how a small town operates, come on down to our twice a month city council meeting and you can talk about potholes and um, taking care of the communities.
Ben lives in Manhattan. I live in Brooklyn. So we're like, fascinating. Tell me more of your weird and exotic ways. Here, here. So uh, tell our listeners, where can they keep up with your work, Ben?
So yeah, um, you can find all my currently available work at my website, BenConComics.com. Uh, like I said, uh, Heavenly Blues is being re-released in bookstores. August 23rd by Arthur Scout Comics. Uh, Renegade Rule is available online. I definitely check that out. And uh, my first prose book, El Campbell Saves Their Saturday will be coming out next year uh, from Scholastic. So And my first prose book, L. Campbell Saves Their Saturday will be coming out next year from Scholastic. So if you like. Non-binary, middle grade adventures, keep an eye open for that.
And who amongst us doesn't? And actually I'll also just say this about Heavenly Blues. Like I know that probably, you know, Apollo being my guest on this show, we might have some. Additional listeners this time who don't usually listen to the podcast, who are political organizer types. Heavenly Blues has got really cool politics and is doing some really cool shit with that. So it's a heist, heist from heaven.
It's about a group of dead thieves in hell who team up to pull the ultimate heist on heaven. Sandman and its views of mythology and whatnot definitely inspired one of the many influences that went into the book. Yeah. So hopefully a really fun comic, one I'm definitely proud of. So we'll hope people check out and enjoy.
Absolutely. That's fantastic.
And don't forget to plug your fabulous podcast on which I have guested multiple times.
Yes, that is progressively horrified, the horror review podcast that holds horror to progressive standards. It never agreed to. We have some great episodes. Definitely check it out, especially the ones where we had Alana on as a guest.
Oh, I thank you. Yeah, I got to talk about Hellraiser twice, Nightmare on Elm Street. We got to talk about the Golem. And it sounds like I'll be back to talk about the thing. I hope it's not a spoiler.
Oh, I am very excited to have you on for that.
As am I.
It is always a great time having you on. And so yes, thank you for letting me join your wonderful show here tonight.
Love a crossover. And as, as for me, I, I'm on the internet a little bit too much still at E L A N A underscore Brooklyn. That's Elana underscore Brooklyn on Twitter. And a new episode of Graphic Policy Radio's side podcast, Deep Space Dive, will be coming to you soon, in which Sarah Daniel and I will discuss. The Mirror Universe episodes of the show. So what else do I have coming up? I, I'll be interviewing some additional comics writers and artists as per usual. And as we like to say, keep it geeky.
Hey, thanks for watching the previous video from Graphic Policy Television. Just by watching, you help support our site. Thank you so much. Now, if you're watching these videos, you probably care about geeky things like movies, television, comic books, toys, games, video games, you name it. You can go and subscribe right now to our YouTube channel to stay in touch and catch all the new videos or check out our website at graphicpolicy.com. There's a nice link on this end of the video. But as always, thank you for watching. Keep on rocking and keep it geeky.